Calling to order again, the Amherst-Pellon Regional School Committee. I'll begin by pointing out that I think Amherst Media is awesome and they do great work and we deeply appreciate everything they do. We normally say that at the end of meetings, but here we're going to say it at the beginning. Hopefully more people are watching and they can see that kind, kind and true state. Approval of the minutes of September 24th, 2019 is the first item of business. I don't know if people have had a chance to review the minutes? Yes, Savanj?
Couple of things, small. On page three of the minutes, at the end of being next to the last paragraph on page three.
Yeah?
The sentence is incomplete and asked a question regarding...
Yes, Mr. Menino, thank Mr. Labrie and ask a question regarding...
Hmm.
Okay. Ms. Delling?
Couple items, so on the call to order for executive session, the roll call lists Ms. Stanser, but it should be Mr. Menino. It was Ms. McDonald, Ms. Hall, Mr. Menino, Mr. Delling.
Okay. That's that first item.
And on the next page, very top, CPAC, C-P-A-C, K-B-S-E-P-A-C?
Okay. Do we have that? I'm just checking to make sure we have. That's great, awesome. So, I guess we're going to go in order. McDonald, Andrew?
Yeah, in the section on the transportation study, there's the second to last paragraph above student activity accounts. There's at the bottom of that paragraph, there's an exchange about, question that I asked about why there'd be challenges that would arise if the start time was just shifted. I believe that Mr. Labrie's response had to do with not getting students to the school too early. Dr. Morris is nodding, so I think, I think that's an important aspect to include in here because it wasn't just that there's a two-tier, it was that we also were looking at not making sure that students weren't getting there too early.
Okay, good. Savanj?
On page four, excuse me, I'm sorry, yeah, page four, under the educational reform bill, third line, it should be assess, where assess is, how charter schools, the third line, the third line from the bottom.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay. Then go ahead.
Municipal should be capitalized and association should be capitalized.
Yes. Okay, Ms. Stanser?
Under, on page two, under new and continuing business, that first section in the first line, it, he, I think it just should be has worked, not he was worked. Under transportation study report, the first line.
Yes, the very end of that top line.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other edits? Yes?
Yeah, I don't know if I'm permitted, I wasn't at this meeting, but there was a sentence in the minutes that I had a question about. Am I permitted to ask what the question? Is that appropriate?
Yeah, I think for, for purposes of clarity presumably, right?
Well, I don't know if it's clarity, that's why I asked.
Why don't you ask the question, we'll find out.
Well, on page, until three, first full paragraph, last sentence, Mr. Labrie is, well, not quoted, but he says, he said, or alleged, that one of the unexpected consequences of bell shift is the effect on working parents in childcare. I'm just struck by the term unexpected consequences. I thought shifting the bells was more than, the impact on families was more than an unexpected consequence. That's all.
Mr. Morris?
So, I think to clarify what was intended by the statement, I think what was intended is that it's, people go into, I'm just trying to remember back, but my, my recollection is people go into the topics of late start because of the research on sleep.
Mm-hmm.
It's not, so, I understand that what you're asking, but I think the unintended was the intended reason for changing a bell schedule would be to provide more time, more rest and sleep for students. So, it's the unintended wasn't so much that like you couldn't anticipate it, but no one goes in to affect the work schedules of family. Does that help clarify?
Thank you.
Okay, any other, any other edits to the minutes? Yes?
Also, in the section on Mr. Labrie's, the last paragraph, this starts, Mr. Delling thanked Mr. Labrie for such a robust, robust data-driven analysis. And there it says, Ms. Spitzer described concerns regarding transportation efficiency of alternative buses. And I believe what I was really just trying to get at was whether or not there were, not alternative buses, but greener options, you know, options that were more energy efficient?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
It wasn't, and I don't think that comes through. And he talked specifically about propane and I just wanted to maybe clarify that in here. If we could add, this is a caveat, as if another district is willing to share economy of scale regarding propane fueling costs because otherwise it doesn't make any sense of sharing the cost of diesel.
Okay, so we have the edits. Is there a move to approve as amended?
A move to approve the minutes of September 24th, 2019 as amended.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved by Ordonez, seconded by McDonald. Any further discussion or edits, seeing none, all was in favor of approving the minutes as amended, signify by raising your hand, aye? Any opposed, this carries unanimously. Great. Onward and upward and forward. Are there any announcements from the committee? In this case, meeting committee members who have announcements. Seeing none, the, just for the public's benefit, it doesn't appear that there's anyone here who will provide a public comment, but I'm going to offer that opportunity right now. We have a public comment available, if anyone wishes to come forward, they can come to the microphone, either three minutes to speak. We don't, and, and as, as we've said every week, particularly if people are availing of themselves of the opportunity to watch at home, which we welcome if you, if we choose to do, that there are alternative ways of getting your comments to the committee. You can write us via email, you can write a regular, traditional postal mail, as well as come to another meeting, another forum. So, we look forward to hearing from everyone. Superintendent's update. Is something in the packet?
It was, it's very brief, and it was a robust agenda.
There it is.
So, and I have one that was not listed, but I wanted to share. So, a couple of the open houses have been completed at the regional level, the summit is the only exception, that's this Thursday evening, and summit typically does it a bit later than the other schools because there's frankly so much family contact throughout the year, that they vote to build that relationship before the open house occurs. This is pretty typical that it's quite a bit later than the other schools. Ms. Cunningham and I, she was able to attend most, but not all of these, have been doing make us better sessions. We did this two years ago, trying to hear from faculty and staff members about three core questions, what's going well in the district and the school, what are some challenges in the school, and what are ideas to make us better? And then Ms. Cunningham and I stay very quiet and take really good notes. And we get to hear for about an hour what, anyone's invited who is a faculty member, regardless of specific role. And so, we were, we've completed all three of these at the regional level. What's a little different this time around, and we've shared the kind of broad themes and summaries and principles, and that's an active part of my supervision of them in terms of follow-up because invariably, even though staff members work for a larger district and organization, most of the first responses people have are things on the ground, which would make logical sense. What's a little different this year is I've been following up on those by having individual or small group meetings every week with staff members. This is across the three districts, not only at the region, to be able to have that conversation a little more intimate setting and be able to have more given back and forth. So, in the large group setting, really it's a list, the role that I play as a listener, note taker. Occasionally, there's a question I respond to, but what I find is, once we start going down that road, it actually eliminates the broader dialogue that can happen if you give every single person an opportunity to participate and to share their thoughts. And so, the individual conversations, I had one this afternoon, for instance, allow for much more dialogue and ongoing communication. And it's, Mr. Smorland picks names out of a randomizer kind of thing, so regardless of roles, I've talked to parent educators, professional staff, we haven't hit, hasn't gotten around to, because sort of stuff for van drivers, I'm sure that, kind of rule that wheel will get there in the next couple of weeks. But something else we're different, differently we're doing this year to make sure we're hearing from, from all staff members, both in large group and then small group settings. For the small group ones, we offer people individual or group because it, you know, I'm aware of my role and for some people, they want to have an individual conversation. For other people, they feel more comfortable being there with a partner or friend and we kind of allow the employee to make whatever decision they like. But they've been very fruitful in helping me understand, again, what's happening on the ground and to gather ideas that sometimes at a, you know, an electronic survey, it's not really going to capture in the same way. And to have authentic dialogue about people raising issues, me sharing constraints and us doing some problem solving at individual level. So, that's that one. The third one is the great span advisory. You can see that we meet on Thursday and if you look at the agenda, there's about ten accompanying documents which have been put on our website. We try to put transparently every document, every video that we've shared at that group is on the website, link to it on our homepage. But we're starting to get down to, I don't know, I'm so bad at cliches, I'm not even giving one, we're trying to get much more specific about what are the pros, what are the cons, what are the constraints, what are barriers? And there's three separate groups working on this. One is much more looking at, again, the academics, one's looking at the socio-emotional, there's four groups, I should say, one's looking at kind of infrastructure space logistics, and then one, Mr. McDonald is on, is looking at kind of process moving forward and what a timeline might be. And so, the idea of next time is getting from a theoretical construct, which is where people were mostly, we're letting people play in sandboxes because that's the nature of the process, to getting much more specific and even allowing for much more kind of, at least philosophical debates, not looking for a vote from this group about, you know, what would be a pro, what would be cons. And so, as this process is looking to wrap up in January, we feel like we need, the next three meetings really going to be focused. We did an additional reach out to middle school staff members, I want to thank Norm Price, who is on the committee. He sent an email that we worked on together to the middle school to just encourage more participation. And I know everyone's quite busy, so we're trying to figure out ways to continue to engage the faculty who can't participate in these meetings and have their expertise shared, particularly at the middle school level. We have elementary reps and we have middle school people, but you know, we really want to continue to enhance that. And the one that is not on here that I apologize is not, is that at the high school level, thanks to Mr. Siddique, Dr. Zermacki and Mr. Jones, they've started a student council that's a little differently focused than prior student leadership. So, historically, the high schools as student council with, you know, class president, right, the very typical roles that you play. This one is much more to inform school policy and procedures and lowercase p policy, just to be really clear, just talking about policy later. So, it's more of an advisory board than it is working on, you know, critical things that typical class officers do. And I think it's a really nice module that they're having and starting to engage on critical topics at the high school. And I want to thank the leadership team at the high school for their willingness and openness to create new structures and new models for student leadership to thrive at that site. So, wanted to share that as well.
Great. Other questions for the superintendent? You know, I'd love to, love to hear next time, by the way, some of the, some of the sense or a slice of some of the interesting things that are going on this fall. I think typically, we always rely upon the parents of students to announce amazing musicals and other events that are going on. I'm thinking this, I mean, I honestly am biased by the fact, I'm thinking by the fact that it seems like regularly in the Daily Hampshire Gazette, I'm hearing that we have absolutely amazingly spectacular, successful athletes in teams, but I'm sure there's a lot of stuff going on that would be, you know, not a, not a, I wouldn't want to take thirty minutes of the meeting up with it, but I think it'd be great to hear. I mean, I think, I'm, I'd love to know and learn more about how it's possible that our football team is apparently astonishingly good.
Undefeated at the moment.
They look like they're headed to like a Western Mass Super Bowl, which isn't unprecedented in the history of our high school, but it's really close, which is just simply awesome.
Knock on something. You have a Cowboys fan and a Giants fan representing the district in that regard, so you really want to knock on the wood.
I just did, I just did. No, 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 seriously, but I'm sure there's a lot of stuff going on and we usually hear about it, like during musical season and different events where they're really thinking, but it'd be kind of cool to hear. All right, cool.
Be happy to do that.
Yeah, no, I said there was, yes, speak up. All right, there we go, let's shout it out. No chairs update, I think I just took all the time for that. What about subcommittees? Do you have subcommittee updates? Yes?
Just very briefly, I paid a visit to Long Meadow High School earlier this week with the board president of Amherst Media, just to look at another model of where a community media station has been working, you know, out of a high school. And aside from the fact that Long Meadow High School is beautiful and, you know, renovated only in 2013, so a very new building, we were, we met with the executive director there and had a very good conversation about their partnership with the high school and with the community, the role that they play. So, just more information, I'm hoping to also pay a visit at some point to East Hampton, who previously had their community station as in, with their school, and then recently broke away, but from what I understand, it was because they wanted to create a theater aspect to the work that they do and so they really needed a separate space. But I'm hoping to draft some sort of report and bring that back to the committee for the committee's consideration if and when we, you know, get to that point to talk about that. So, just wanted to know about that.
Great. Other, other subcommittees? Obviously, we have policy on the agenda later.
Just the finance and budget, we will be meeting next week. We were scheduled for tonight, but it didn't work. So, we're meeting next week.
That's, that was part of the hint I was getting at, I didn't know if we had one or not, so.
No.
So, I was staring down the end of the table. Okay, so we'll move forward then to some of the updates. New and continuing business and athletic fields update, very welcome topic and a super moment and importance for us this past spring, so it's great to hear.
Yeah, so I'll do some introductions before I ask some folks to come up, but I think it's worth actually going back to the spring because I think the presentation does so, but it's intentionally going to be more focused on moving forward. So, I think, as Ms. Nakajima said, excuse me, we've had a highly successful fall in terms of our athletic teams, both boys and girls, and thanks to the student athletes that coaches and Ms. Stewart, Ms. Malcolm, who are here tonight, for their, and Mr. Jones has been heavily involved in that as well, for their work on that. So, last spring, we had a number of families, students and community members come in and staff, I should say, who are really concerned about our athletic fields. And they're, they're concerned on multiple fronts. One was on the fields in the spring, but also about how to move forward in a more generalized context of what's the long-term plan. So, there was both short-term, medium-term and long-term concerns that we heard, as Ms. Stewart will say, and she was, this is before Ms. Stewart was on boarded as the athletic director, which wasn't until mid-August, so I want to note that. And we did a lot of work with our Department of Public Works, our own staff, our community to continue to communicate with coaches, with, with student athletes, with community members. And I want to publicly thank, we had multiple opportunities where community members came in to work on the fields over the summer. I want to thank the DPW for supplying them with materials and direction of what was going to be most critical, but we had mass groups of students and community members come in to support the DPW's work. In addition, I know this is in the presentation, but I'm going to encourage Ms. Stewart to really get to the looking forward pieces of the aspects of the presentation. We did some purchasing of new equipment that was recommended by our DPW, particularly around irrigation, and it's been a very dry fall, for those of you who track weather patterns. So, I did receive a report recently that had we not had the water cannon and the attachment, we'd had very different field conditions. So, I really want to thank the guidance that the DPW offered because I think if we had not done that and had the same weather, we'd be having a very different scenario on our fields. And I also want to thank that we put some new systems in place that really safeguarded our fields and worked on some of the overuse issues. There's an, under our ability to do that long-term with the demands on the fields is, I think, a question mark and that's why we're having the conversation about moving forward. But we did limit the fields and we did, you know, try to communicate that carefully and sensitively to folks who are used to having more full reign of the fields, but it was, it's critical based on the feedback we heard last year and the professional recommendations we received to do so. So, I think with all that introduction, I don't think you've been in this setting before, right?
No, I haven't.
Yeah, unless you did it as your student athlete here, so.
I know, I wish.
So, Ms. Stewart is here with us, she is our athletic director, and I also recognize Ms. Malcolm, who's in the back of the room, who probably doesn't want me to recognize her, but I'm going to do it anyway, who works with Ms. Stewart and plays a truly critical role in all the communication with families, with other schools, other school districts, the scheduling, which is, is no short task and she does it in a way that's really trying to organize a department, to be forward-thinking, working with students and families effectively, and also to be incredibly organized. So, thanks to both of them who have come into the role.
Dr. Morris, how are you going to advance the slides?
I'm going to do it manually because our clicker's not working.
I thought I'd clear that up now.
Yes, sure.
So, you don't break your stuff.
Yeah, I'll just give you a point.
Yeah, 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 absolutely. But welcome, Ms. Stewart.
All right, thank you. Thanks for having me. As Dr. Morris said, I am the new athletic director. My name's Victoria Stewart and I'm very happy to be here. Okay, so first off, I want to just talk about the history. It first started off with recreational working groups that started in 2016, which had the regional schools, school members such as Sean, the former athletic director, Rich Pharoah, LSAC staff and DPW and others. The working group requested funds to the school committee as well as the towns in order to get this field study started, which finished off in the spring of 2019.
So, I want to, as he walks back in, because I told him to come back at 7:50 and he's a couple of minutes early, just Mr. Solmek, who is our assistant town manager, actually at the moment, he is a slightly adjusted title because the town manager's out of town, but I'm going to go with that one if that's okay with you, who really was responsible in shepherding this process forward. So, thank you for being here tonight, Dave.
So, the goals of this strategic plan and field study were to create an inclusive and playing and spectating environment for all, which means engaging also representatives of the field and park programs, being accessible to everyone so they can watch the games and play the games better, and then also revenue-generated design field. So, like we talked about the success of the athletes so far, fun fact, seven out of the eight sport teams are going to be in the playoffs. Three are field sports that use the fields here. Golf just finished up yesterday, won Western Mass champion for individual, we came in third as a team. However, it'd be great to have fields that are good for tournament play. The MIA will take time and they will make, let us have field usage. If we have great fields, they'll let us host tournaments here. So, that's a major goal we should get because if we're in the tournament, it'd be great to host and have that home advantage. So, that's something to look forward to with this plan.
MIA, just for people who aren't familiar with that acronym, who may be watching, if you could explain what that organization is.
Okay, so that's the organization that our, our school is under for sports and for the school is, what is the school for the education? It's followed with the MIA, but the sports are under MIA, which is just rules that we follow, like a bunch of rules, education rules, academic rules, as well as attendance rules as well.
Yeah, so the governance body for Massachusetts inter-scholastic sports. I think it's also worth noting, before I go to the next slide, if it's okay, it's just the accessibility that Ms. Stewart talked about really dovetails with the ADA audit that we did on the inside of the building last year. If you look, if you remember, Ms. Stewart has created a link back to that report that was presented to the school committee, there was a lot of accessibility issues for getting to the fields, for spectators and potentially for others who want to watch the sports that literally getting to the field right now, we don't reach the compliance for ADA. Sorry, I just want to connect that back.
No, that's good. The summer meeting process, which included invited stakeholders and it was ran by superintendent Mike Morris as well as DPW, they just shared updates on the fields. And after having the field study done, that's when we purchased the water cannon, the water cannon attachment. We also aerated the fields, DPW. A lot of seeding was done, extra seeding, more seeding than normal, and other stuff such as volunteer work. So, in those pictures right there, that's the field hockey team above and some of the other community members. To add to that, other things that are going on right now, the baseball infield was just done, so that was done by youth baseball. If you look at the football field, there's numbers on the field right now, so they were stenciled by our youth football program. So, there's little things that are happening all the time with these fields from the community which I think we don't want to miss out on as well.
And just to add one other piece, because the school can be heard a lot about it last spring, is that was the length of the grass for the field hockey, which was a critical issue based on how the sport is played. I received a report, and I think I may have just shared it with the chair, I'm not sure, sent it to the whole committee from the coach of the field hockey team, that was communicating how much better the field playing surface is. And some of that's the irrigation, but some of it's just that DPW has gotten, they're cutting it at a level where the ball rolls more, I don't know how to say that differently, but it's rolling in the way the sport is intended. It's being played in the way they, in the way the sport is intended to be played, not my evening so far. But I think because there was a lot of focus on field hockey, I think it's just worth noting, some of it's about irrigation, but some of it's also just about the maintenance and making sure it's appropriate for the sport that's actually being played on the field.
Just an update about the current conditions of the field. Yes, our field hockey did write a great email to about DPW, so I thank DPW for that, it was a great email to receive. The fields in the beginning of the season, they were, they were in pretty good shape. No one has played on the fields, a lot of watering was done. But once the season started going on, right, you know, the usage, the wear and tear, so that's what happens. If you look at the soccer field now, you'll see a little bit of wear and tear, you'll see a lot near the goalie boxes. The community field, which is where football's played, youth football's played a little bit, the center track field though, which is phase one, that's where a lot of the issues are happening right now. So, that's what phase ones, we're going to be looking at later on in the slides. But the fields outside the track, such as the field hockey field, yes, it has been getting cut shorter, so it's been great, especially because we are able to water them so they don't burn as much. Simple things such as that have been great that DPW has been doing. And then the track, which is also part of phase one. The track, I would say, is a big concern right now, just because it's being patched up and it's not level, and a few meets had to be canceled last year. So, that's just a big thing and concern that we have to keep in the back of our mind because we don't want that to happen this upcoming spring as well.
And just to remind folks who haven't read the committee as long, that track was the original impetus to start looking at fields more generally, and that was the original discussion a couple of years ago on the committee for, the kitchen track was seen as the most critical. Now, we're looking at it more holistically, but I think the history is important.
So, if you guys have the picture in front of you, you can see what phase one will be working on. That's working on the track, like I just said before, as well as the field and putting some bleachers in, cleaning up, putting some signage, making it look really nice, everyone knows they're entering the Amherst hurricane zone, right? And it's also working on a pathway to attach other fields, so it's going to be accessible so people can walk. Even teachers, science teachers, you know how they go in the back of the school and go in the woods, there'll be a walking path area, so it'll be even used for educational purposes as well. So, it's not just sports, it's going to hit the community, it's going to hit sports and it's going to hit education and just members in general. So, it's a big thing to look forward to. So, what we need to do to get this moving, we just need to start engaging the community members around the public-private partnerships, as it says, and then raising awareness of the issues, which I think we have a little bit, but just keep raising them, but then also coming up with solutions to fix those issues that are happening. We need to facilitate dialogue and focus on phase one in detail. Okay, so this is going to have, we're going to have an advisory board to come together to work on what we have to do to implement phase one and to move forward. That would include town and school officials, and then using college resources, maybe when this is all getting done, using some other schools to run some stuff while it's all getting worked on, and then keep the agenda items going. So, these are just really important. And to fundraise, fundraising is a big one, to reduce municipal government's funds. So, we just definitely want to work on that fundraising however we can. And then request capital funds for the FY21 to develop the schematic design of phase one because we did do this whole plan, but we do have to work on the design of getting this plan finished. So, yeah, just so you guys know too, because I know you guys want to know about sporting events, boys soccer's going on right now for senior night, but girls soccer is next Monday, so that'll be the last one played on that field, so if you guys want to check that field out, please feel free to go watch them play.
Right. And if I could just add to what Ms. Stewart said at the end, I think, just to make more explicit, so what was done with the prior study, it wouldn't get you to schematic design, it was really at the feasibility level, so you couldn't give the work that was completed to a landscape architect and say, yeah, we want to do it, and the cost estimates are still very much at the estimate level. There's a number of decisions that would have to get made about phase one. For instance, you know, in the report, it talks about the advantages of turf over grass fields, but also there's some cost implications of that. That needs to be studied in further depth. The phase one that was designed by Weston and Sampson talked about reorienting the field, which which has a certain cost to it. And what we would need to do on the next level of work, and that's why the, you know, trying to work on a request for capital funds for schematic design is to look much more specifically on what would it cost if it was grass versus turf? What would it cost if we kept the orientation versus moved it? And what are the implications of having tournament-ready field and the soccer field size, which right now is undersized? And I think the first study did a good job of laying out some broad parameters. And what we'll need to do is, as, as Ms. Stewart said, have an advisory board, some critical community members, staff members, perhaps coaches, others who are gonna work actively and hopefully school community member, work actively with a consultant, with an architect, landscape architect, to get real options with real numbers and real implications that we could bring to the community a year from now. But we're not at that place with what was completed last spring.
Questions from the committee?
I just have a question, given what Dr. Morris just said about how we first need to come up with a plan for the specifics of the design and the question about fundraising. So that's one of the items here, and I feel like it's easier to fundraise when you're saying, we're gonna have, this is the plan, this is what we need the money for. So are you thinking of, are we thinking about phasing it so that maybe we lay the groundwork for the fundraising while we're simultaneously deciding the design or are we? I'm just wondering about the, when the fundraising's going to start and what that might look like.
Mind if I take this one?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, so I think the latter thing you said is right, is setting up the infrastructure for fundraising on the front end and that'll have to be community-oriented. It can't be staff members kind of facilitating that. But I think from talking to other communities, some of the advisory boards they create often have offshoots where there are community members who work on that and you're absolutely right. You can't fundraise when you have hypothetical, we might do this, we might do that, but we're gonna need that. But we know that the communities, we've heard loud and clear from the communities, that they will require us to fundraise, the organization to fundraise to reduce the cost of municipal governments. And so I think, trying to think of that early and trying to figure out who are some critical stakeholders who can, again, set up the infrastructure for that, that is ready to go as the other phase is done, is what we're, how we're thinking about it.
Sedona's?
So I just wanted to say thank you, Ms. Stewart, for coming tonight. It's great to meet you finally and personally. I watched the Window Into ARPS segment with you. And I also just really appreciate your enthusiasm and excitement and your urging us all to attend events, which is great.
Oh yeah, it'll be great. They're excited, so.
One question for you. I know last year when the fields issue came up, there was a real concern raised about the inequity about how the girls' fields versus the boys' fields or, you know, girls' sports fields versus the boys' sports fields were being treated. In your opinion, has that inequity been addressed? And if not, what can we do better?
I definitely think it has. The only field that female sport uses by themselves is field hockey. So that definitely has gotten shorter with that water gun attachment. They're able to reach the fields with the water, so that made a huge difference altogether as well. And that coach is actually very happy with how the fields are this year.
Great.
Thank you.
Further, Sanch?
Thank you for being here this evening. It's really good news. I do have one question regarding these pha-, how many phases are there?
There's a...
Three or four.
Three or four. One of the other concerns brought up by parents and town, town members was the very high likelihood that kids would be hurt, given the conditions of the field. Are you confident that the initial steps that have been taken will reduce the likelihood of injuries? Or are we still gonna be concerned about, should we still be concerned about that?
I would say all the field sports are pretty good for now.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Della?
So my question is just generally about timing. When I, when I take a half a step back and I think about how long it took us to get the recreational working group report and then we're talking about not even seeing a schematic design for another year? And then, it's just, I would be remiss, having attended so many meetings on this topic, if I didn't ask, is, is this really the fastest that we can, that we can move forward? I mean, I understand that we, schematic design requires capital funds and those don't grow in trees and you have to request that as a process and that's tied to the annual, I, I get that restriction. Are, are there, are there maybe other options that we're, that we're missing in terms of following up with the towns or doing some sort of part of the design now? It, it just, just seems like a shame to, to have to wait this long to, to have the next step inch forward.
So I'm looking at Mr. Mangano who might have some thoughts about that?
Hello?
Good evening.
So, so there may be a process, and I can come back next time, there may be a process where you could try to appropriate funds earlier. So if we do the regular capital process, the funds won't be available till July 1st, so that would really be the earliest you could start it. I have to look, there may be a way to either use existing funds in our operating budget, if there's anything available, or some of our capital stabilization funds, appropriate those earlier through a vote. I have to, again, see if there's other steps to where you might be able to get the, the study started sooner than July 1st, maybe in the spring or, or late winter.
So I think, I think we should get going. I mean, it's, it, we had a lot of conversations this past year about the conditions of the field. Some things like the conditions of the track, the running track itself, aren't gonna get, aren't gonna get better until it's reconstructed or rebuilt or redone. And we know this is a big lift, we know there's gonna have to be significant fundraising behind it. And the only way to do that is to be organized, whether, both as you said financially, but also getting the plan going, the planning going for a schematic design so that we can have something to build momentum around. So I think, I mean, I'm not hearing anything contrary from the committee either that I think we would encourage. By the way, welcome. I'll share what the colleague said earlier, welcome, jumping right into, I'm excited. But as I said earlier also, I mean, we know the sports are really important to the community, to our student body, to all of us. And as you also said, it's an asset for, for the, for the schools and for the families in our schools, but also for the community generally. So this is really important. And it's, it's awesome that we have really competitive athletes and teams that are well-organized across our sports. And we should have facilities that match in quality, the quality of the work that they're putting into it. And we can't get there until we get organized and we can facilitate a conversation between our towns and booster groups and other folks who might be willing to help. So I think what I would love to see is pick, pick a meeting, but, but another meeting not too distant in the future. I think we should hear what the next steps are. A, just to be able to share them with the public, but also B, if there's any role for the committee, including repurposing funds that might be available to do so, that we're able to be presented with that vote or that proposal.
Great.
Makes sense?
It does.
Good? Yes?
One observation. So I had the opportunity to go to the presentation last spring that the consultants did. I think it was last spring. And one of the things that I was not aware of as a community member at that time, not on the school committee, is how much impact the, the whole process is gonna have on the town and people in the community. You know, making the, the, the field where the track is accessible for people who can't climb down the hill, can't, you know, walk over all those surfaces. But also in the additional phases, the things that are gonna be added for walking places and, and that encompasses fields all over town, not just the school. And I think when you're starting to do the fundraising, if you can bring that into it, I think it might be really helpful to make people in the community realize this isn't just for the student athletes. This is really for everybody in town.
You know, and the, the, that's a wonderful point. And I think also, I guess, in my head also, one of the reasons why we want to build momentum, get going, get organized, get better plans, is, is the fact that there are lots of conversations occurring in all four towns, but also in Amherst, I know, there are lots of conversations going on around capital projects. And we either are part of that conversation, whatever our sliver of the pie is to get this done, we're either part of that conversation or we're not. And I think honestly, given the need, I'm not trying to throw out Amherst issues, but I'm going to because they're relevant, this conversation, that when you think of the roads, when you think of the state of repair of them, when you think of all the other kind of equipment, you know, we need more trucks in our, in our fleet in town sometimes. That we're not gonna be able to get all those things and also carve out a multi-year plan that supports this priority. And so the reality is if you're not organized, you're not part of the conversation. If you're not part of the conversation, you're gonna find that the capital budget's been carved up before we're able to get to the table. So if it's important to people, it's something you have to do and you have to push.
I was just gonna say, I'll connect with the town manager, I'll see him later this week as well because, you know, wanna recognize Mr. Solmek's work on this and that, well, the fields were, particularly the field that's connected to phase one is primarily a region-owned field and such. You can't look at it as an isolated variable, that it disconnects to the town as well and to other, people said to community use. So while it's not used by the school, there's, the track being a great example of a regional resource that's used widely by members of the community on a daily basis. And so I'll make sure that we loop in the town into this conversation as well because while it's a regional school committee conversation, the prior study was done as a joint partnership and we want to make sure that we're, we'll maintain that. So I don't know if you have anything that you want to add, Mr. Solmek, or?
I think it's all been said.
Okay.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 7B on new and continuing business is a budget update. Like knocking on wood to support the success of our sports teams, our agenda, we're actually running ahead of schedule right now, which is a scary, scary thought. Mr. Mangano? Not much, just a little bit, just a little bit.
So I didn't think about the black and white ink when I thought about the color coding. It was, it seemed like a really good idea.
The real question is, has everyone done their homework and looked at their packet electronically? Because this will help at this moment.
And I can highlight, it's pretty, regions are pretty, so the general takeaway, regions are pretty good shape. There are a couple cost centers which I'll point out to monitor, but there are no areas that are in bad shape. Like at the elementary level, we had one that had a red. There are no reds at the region. After three months, the Amherst Pelham Regional School District budget is projected to finish under budget due to savings in tuitions and payroll. In payroll, we're currently tracking $188,000 under budget, mostly due to vacant positions for bilingual psychologists, a VCBA, an electrician, and a para educator position. Some of those positions, if we can't fill them, we will contract them out with agencies that provide those services until we can find somebody. We have some other payroll shifts. We have a .2 FTE reduction in performing arts at the middle school, that's a temporary reduction. We have a .25 FTE increase in SLIF staffing, that is...
Students with limited schooling, so generally they're coming from parts of the world where, because of either the context of what was happening in their, in their, where they were, or because school was like a half-day model where they were, they come to us without the full literacy and academic skills in their home language or home country. So it's a, it's a different kind of ELL support that they need. So we added that to the budget last year. We looked at a number of our students, particularly students who came either refugee status or otherwise, that increased significantly this year. So we increased that line because, or that position to be more time-based than the student needs.
Does that stand for students with limited or erupted formal education?
It does, well done.
It's, it's, it's just nice when you can actually explain an acronym, that's what I'm saying. Like you did with many other words, but it's like, it actually does stand for something.
It does.
We converted a para position to a .8 nursing position to support the medical needs of our students. We have a .54 new communication rule. It's sort of a communication role. It's sort of a combination of the communication role, but also administrative support for our new ELL coordinator, again, because of the increased reporting requirements of the Town Act and other things. And then we have a .54 FTE increase of an IS technician. If you were at the elementary presentation, there was a decrease on the elementary side because this position was sort of relooked at and we determined how much of their responsibilities were region versus Amherst. And so it resulted in an increase to region. And then lastly, staff turnover savings and some other staffing adjustments, in both the high school and the middle school, have resulted in some of those savings. All of our school expense accounts are on track. So the big area of our budget right now that's showing some savings is special education. Currently projected under budget by about $450,000 due to four fewer out-of-district placements than anticipated. As the budget is finalized in March, several factors can influence the actual enrollment from January and February when we do the projection to the following September. The district is fortunate, fortunate that these factors have swung in a positive financial direction this, this year. And should be mindful that these costs can swing significantly really at any time. And this is also just another, you know, Dr. Morris and I harp on this sometimes. It's another example of, because we have the split districts, these things create some weird fluctuations where if you were at the elementary presentation, you heard that we have two additional out-of-district placements at the elementary level. And unfortunately, we can't just shift the budget the way we would if we were one K-12 district.
Just a question, a special education, four spread over $450,000, that's over $100,000 per placement. What, what do we get for that?
So, yeah. So when we talk about students who, their special education plan requires them to save out-of-district placement, that means that their needs are such that they're required to be, you know, what we're required as a district is to meet their needs by sending them to a special education licensed program. And so the cost includes transportation as well as the educational services they need. And these costs are set by the state or approved by the state, I should say. And they can range anywhere from, for an individual student, from $50,000 to $400, $500,000 per student based on the student needs and what the programming they require. And so these four students, $450,000, I would say that's pretty typical in terms of the ratio of students who go out of district to the cost center, the cost of educating those students.
Dr. Morris, don't we have, don't we have a student services, special education agenda topic coming up in the future?
We will, yes.
When, when do we have that again?
So we have to figure out the scheduling of that because it was at a meeting that got changed.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was wondering. So I remember it was like, I think it was supposed to be tonight originally.
Yeah, so, you know, I think we're typically looking at December 10th, although it's not listed on the last topic. But yeah, Dr. Brady is aware of that original date.
The reason I'm raising is that I don't want to get into an extended conversation about what out-of-district services are now. Because we, we in fact have an agenda topic coming up in the future that'll allow for that, that conversation, particularly with somebody who's apparently a qualified licensed professional who can describe these things to us.
Clarification.
Yes.
It is scheduled to have a discussion of the special education program in the future.
Yeah, 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 exactly. I'm sorry. Yes, exactly right.
I don't think I know the answer to this question, but what happens to that $450,000? Is it just held in advance, possibly looking at maybe a youngster being placed during the school year?
So for this year, we'll hold it for a little while to see how the year unfolds, make sure there are no new out-of-district placements. At some point, it'll go to the transfer reserve and then if we want to use it, we'll come back to you with a budget transfer request with how we want to use it.
Sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
And so it, it can't be carried over?
So what happens if it, if it's, say, it's, it remains that much available and there's no other needs in the district, there's no other accounts that are over budget that need help? And there's no other additional needs that we decide, like, you know, design work for a field study or something like that? Then it would go into our reserve fund.
It will.
Yeah, so in region, any money left over in the operating budget goes into our excess and deficiency fund.
Okay, thank you.
To make things more complicated, but I think it is worth noting that a couple of years ago, the region did set up a special education specific reserve fund. So another decision, I mean, everything Mr. Mangano said is correct, but the committee could also choose to put funds in to build a kind of a buffer if things turn a different direction in the future that we're not pulling from other resources. So just another thing that may be under consideration later this year if this trend holds.
Keep rolling.
Projections of charter choice and vocational tuition, so different types of tuition. Won't be ready till Q2, which is around December. Preliminary projections from DESI show that our charter tuitions are coming in about $100,000 over budget with a corresponding increase to our revenues coming in over budget as well because the reimbursement's tied to our tuition. But please note that these preliminary projections have differed quite widely from actual outcomes. So really until December, you're not gonna have a good number, but that's what we'll use as a basis for now. It's too early to project utilities, but we did lock in rates and so they're all known. And so really the main variable will be consumption this winter. Health insurances are still shifting as new employees come on and last year's retirees move over to the retiree pool. But we did receive confirmation that we have a 1% reduction in our premium rates for retirees that will go into effect on January 1st, 2020. And we've actually, we have 1% decrease, we've budgeted a 1% Um, and we've got, actually we have one percent decrease, we've budgeted a one percent increase over that second half of the year, we'll actually see a two percent savings um, in our retiree rates. And at this early point in the year, the district is on track with the expected savings in payroll and special tuitions. And we will adjust as more information comes available. And then the last page is our revenues, which, um, I think I sent you all an update earlier, but essentially they're on track, other than the charter, uh, tuition reimbursement coming in higher, which will be adjusted when we get the Q two report, um, but other than that, everything's on track. Any questions?
Um, thanks Sean for this. A question perhaps for the superintendent, uh, the vacant positions, there's a list there for bilingual psychologists. Are there any plans to fill that position, or is this gonna be one of those that is filled by a consultant?
So, uh, we have been filling this through, um, folks who consult with us, we posted the position last year, it's split between two districts. Uh, Dr. Brady interviewed two, three, three candidates. Uh, we didn't find the right match, so it's still an open position, and if we find the right person, we would fill it. Um, but right now, we haven't yet found the person with the skill sets that we need for that position.
But you're continuing to look for somebody to fill that role?
Yes, we would be very pleased if that role got filled.
Thank you.
Right, any further questions? Yes.
Um, Sean, on the, the last page revenue accounts. Um, regional transportation is up twenty-nine thousand plus. I thought those were all contracted prior to the school year, what, why is there an increase in?
So this is in term, this is the reimbursement.
Oh, okay.
So this is the reimbursement we get from the state because we're a regional school district, so they increased some line items from when we did the budget.
Thank you.
Yes.
Um, I'm sorry if I missed this, but the other programs and student services have the yellow, some issues to monitor.
Um.
So I, I, what were those issues?
Yeah, okay, thanks for reminding me.
Yeah.
Um, so the other programs is the charter tuition.
Okay.
So again, just knowing that there's some concern, there's always uncertainty with the vocational and, um, charter and choice, so. And after Q two, we'll be able to lock that in. And then student services, um, it's the same thing I mentioned at the elementary presentation, which is our, um, homeless and foster transportation. That that's just a volatile number, um, that we have to monitor throughout the year.
Thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none, we're gonna move on to transportation bid discussion, I didn't see a handout for that.
Yeah, there's not really a handout, um, it's more of a brief conversation on track. Um, so I, so I don't think we spoke about this yet, we're, um, in the process of developing our, um, bid documents for our next three to five-year transportation contract. Um, F Y twenty is the last year, so we wanna get it out sometime this fall or early winter. And, um, in order to offer a five-year contract, or the option to have a five-year contract, um, the school committee will have to vote to do that, cause typically the longest you can offer without that is a three-year contract. And what we've done in the past is to, um, advertise the bid as a three-year contract with two option years. And those option years are at the sole discretion of the school committee. Um, so it makes, it gives us the option, if the contract's good, um, like this last one we had, where we really took advantage of those two option years. Um, it gives the school committee the option to keep it for up to five years. Um, if we feel like the market has gone to a place where we're paying more than we could, um, then it gives you the option to cancel the contract after three years. Um, and doing that also allows the, um, the bus vendors to amortize their bus costs over a longer span of time. Um, because if, if, if they think it's only gonna be three years, you know, at the most, they're, they're gonna try to amortize that bus over three years and give you a kind of a higher rate, if they, they think there's a reasonable possibility that could be five years, that helps them spread the cost of the, the new vehicles that they, they have to buy, um, for our contract. Um, so that's really most of the conversation, it's a follow-up to the, um, report that we got from the consultant, that was sort of the first step to help guide us and how we wanna draft our specs. Um, we'll probably be in touch with him as we develop the bid documents for support as well, cause he does a lot of this. Um, and our transportation department right now is working on putting together the routes and what we wanna see. Um, and yeah, so that's sort of what the update was, and any input, questions, thoughts about offering the three years with two option years, um, as a.
So at this point, at this point, you'd, you'd be welcoming feedback on the three plus one plus one.
Yeah.
As well as also anything else that
Anything else, yeah.
we're, we're coming up, that people would say, well, I'd like you to take into consideration when, when you're developing the bid document.
Yep.
Okay.
I just, eh, so in addition to what Mr. Nakaduma said, just a potential vote next week. I'm just making sure the committee is clear on what they might be voting on next week, since that's on the agenda.
You mean, this would be something to be voting on next week?
Well, on the agenda, it says for a potential vote on the twenty-ninth, so.
Okay.
That's, I think that's part of the discussion.
Back on here again?
This should, uh, that if you could clarify that, whether the committee does or doesn't, might in, might be influenced by what we're actually voting on.
It would be good, cause that would allow us, we don't wanna release the bid documents until we have that vote. Um, and so the vote would be something along lines of, again, just authorizing us to include that contract term in the, the bid specs.
Which puts a fine point on, anything else anyone wants to see on the document? You know, there's any other guidance? So.
Uh, um, had asked Mr. Labrie about the on-spots. And he mentioned that Mohawk was the only school system he knew that used them. And they used them for mud, where I was asking about the dirt roads and Chutesbury and Leverett more for the ice than the, the mud, and it turns out that Kazmeskas is the provider of Mohawk.
Yep.
And that they said that they would be willing to, as long as everybody was bidding on with on-spots for the the dirt road routes, they would do it too.
Yeah, I'll touch base with our, um, facility director and transportation coordinator about trying to include that wording in our, um, in our specs.
It's the, um, the little chains that can drop down either hydroically or through air to the back rear tires that will help them gain a li- little bit of traction, it's not like pu- stopping and putting chains on the, eh, around the actual tire.
Right.
But it just gives you that little bit of oomph to get over the hill or up the hill.
Little extra safety.
Yes.
Thank you.
Having not been through this before, this is, might be a very basic question, that what, um, when we negotiate, when we create a contract, what is locked in versus changeable during the period of the contract?
So. As you heard from our consultant, we have sort of a complicated transportation, um, system. So the way we bid it out is we bid, um, Amherst, a certain number of Amherst routes, Pelham, Pelham routes, Leverett, Chutesbury routes. And we take different bidders, vendors can bid on any combination of those, and what we do is we go with the lowest combination. So it could be one vendor gets all of them, it could be one vendor gets one of the three sets or whatever. Um, and what they're bidding on is the first year price. And then what we build into the contract, which Mr. Labrie noted is we ta- we, we state in the contract how the contract will increase in future years, which is, it's tied to inflation. Um, so we said, we have a specific inflation index that we use so that they know which one we're monitoring. And so they know the, the, the low price on the first year is what awards the contract, and then each year after that is adjusted by that inflation index going forward.
Can I ask?
Yeah, please.
So, so, um, part of the presentation that we heard from Mr. Labrie was about, um, the impact of changing start times. So is, is that sort of schedule construct, um, locked in with that contract? Or does, or would we still have the flexibility during the contract term to adjust schedules?
So we'll probably wanna include some language that makes sure that vendors know that that's a possibility during this next contract. Um, typically, the price isn't an issue, as long as the number of buses don't change. Um, but that could potentially change depending on what the committee decides to do and the district decides to do. Uh, so we'll make sure we include that language, and we also always ask, um, the bidders to include the price to add a route or to add a run. Um, so that we have that u- upfront, so we know what that cost will be.
Right. So I, I, please.
Um, I just wanted to add, go back to, um, my question back when, um, Mr. Labrie was here about kind of energy efficiency and thinking creatively about any options that we might have on the table to lower the carbon footprint of our transportation cost. So I don't know if that's something that should be included in the bid, but to the extent that these options are available, and I'm not sure they are available. Um, I think it might be worth considering having a, a way of weighing those, even if they cost a little bit more, putting it into the equation so that we could consider them, um, in the process when we're choosing. Just cause I, I've heard, I'm sure everybody at this table has been hearing from the community that they're concerned about the carbon footprint of our transportation.
Yeah, we can talk about that more maybe at the next, so there's ways where we can do bid alternates, where we can say, give us a price for diesel buses and give us a price for.
Exactly.
Now, like, the question would be, how many of those types of buses, I mean, if we're looking for like the whole fleet, the number's gonna be kinda eye draw, you know, pop up, um, if we're looking for just part of.
Areas of our community, that might be well served, eh, our, our district is so big that clearly what works in certain parts may not work for the entire district, but it seems like getting that info would be good.
If we've wanted to phase in, you know, two or three routes over the five years that were, um, using an electric vehicle or some other technology that comes out during that time, we could ask them to include the, the markup price for that.
Yeah, I just, I think it would help, um, move the conversation forward a little bit in our community, so.
Yeah, so, so I'm conscious of, of agenda creep. Um, but I do feel like I need to, you know, I do wanna respond to Ms. Spitzer's comment, cause I think it's a broader conversation about energy usage, and you know, for instance, um, I had someone, um, who's more knowledgeable than me in this area said the number one thing we could do is if we reduce the length of routes. Um, and more families took the bus, and less families were driving their children to school. That would have a much greater impact than whatever vehicle, the bus, whatever type of vehicle the bus was used for an electric versus like, you know, the, that, if you think of carbon footprint, if everyone took the bus, the current buses we have now versus the number of, and I'm not trying to fault anyone who drives their child to school, but that actually is a much larger carbon footprint than actually whatever bus you use for the, so I think that conversation is a dynamic one. Uh, and I don't claim to be an expert by any stretch of the imagination, but, you know, I think separate from a contract, that may be something that the committees wanna talk about in terms of carbon footprint more generally, cause the more I learn about it, the more, um, maybe public campaigns are around individual decision-making would have a, a greater impact than, um, a technical inve- an investment in technology. So, uh, I don't wanna go too far down this road, but I think it's a broader conversation I'd be very interested in having, and maybe getting consulted by the community experts that we have, uh, around how do we contribute, um, to lowering the carbon footprint of our, um, in our town.
So I think we should take that on, I mean, I, I do think we should take it on. But I also think, since the context for this item was that we were gonna be voting on this next week potentially, um, it, it's, I mean, you talked about three plus two, or three plus plus one plus one. I can't even conceive of us having a bus contract that goes five years into the future that doesn't incorporate, um, some element around sustainability. Meaning, meaning either directly some kind of, uh, incentives or a quest for creative ideas. Um, or certainly, I don't know how you'd write this in, some, some flexibility on the part of the bidders. And, and an interesting willingness to see an interest on their part to engage with the district and thinking about ways in which they can be greening their operations. So the idea is, in other words, if you think, imagine one construct, we have a contract, they have their elements, they have their incentives. They have a certain number of routes and they, then they feel, they feel like they can have business certainty and financial certainty around rigidly holding on to what they're doing. And obviously, we're talking about, if not exactly the opposite of that, we're talking about a model in which ideally, the partner would be coming up with ideas they could suggest right now. Be similar to what was described a moment ago, grabbing some portion of the routes that can be done with an alternative fleet. Um, but also, more importantly, some ki- some willingness to engage that if we're gonna bother planning, it would be, pardon me for saying it this way, it would be insane for us to actually have a parallel conversation around how we improve the sustainability of our transportation operations and have at the center of it, a bus operation which was inert and unchanging, right? I mean, that wouldn't work very well. So I don't, I don't know if there's language you can steal from something else, or that you know of that could help, that it would be.
Yeah, I mean, what I can share, uh, candidly is, you know, what I learned when I was in, in Boston a couple of weeks ago, is the places that are investing in what you're describing or doing it within-house transportation routes, those are not typically gone, done through consultants from the communities that are doing it, so I'm not suggesting we can't, but I think it may be the case that for our local routes, that's where we focus more of that energy, because that seems like what towns like Concord and other places that are making efforts are doing, um, is doing it themselves instead of relying on vendors.
Is, can I, can I, I gotta throw it to you for two seconds, but I apologize, but, um, could we get a, an answer to that before we vote on the, the bid next week? I mean, it sounds, cause it sounds, again, it doesn't make a lot of sense, again, to lock in our specs around a bid. And then figure out whether or not we can do something ourselves.
And as, can I just quickly clarify, so you're not, you're not locking in the specs next week. All you're really doing is just voting the, the ability to include the, the term. Um, the specs will not be finalized next week, so the, the spec conversation can continue, it's really just the term, um, that we can offer that.
Um, so I would, I would plus one the comment about, it's hard to imagine locking in a five-year contract in this, um, in this age, there's just so much that's changing, um, pretty, over time and within eh, you know, within a three-year period, it might look very different, so I would, I would second that. But my question, so going back to your comment about what you learned, um, from somebody else about the impact, that we can actually impact our carbon footprint much more by shortening, um, shortening the routes, which mean more routes, but fewer, um, personal vehicles being driven to, um, to the schools, so two questions would be helpful to understand that is how many, eh, it's, is that more, see more at the elementary level or more at the secondary level? And if, if we do see significant personal vehicle ridership at the secondary level, um, can we include that within the language of, of the contract? Because eh, if we're talking about electric vehicles, but at the same time, we're saying but we're, we can impact it more by getting more people to ride the bus, then we should also be looking at that. And there's probably some sort of happy medium in there that we have maybe more routes, so it costs us more money in terms of the transport, but it would be less money than if we went to an electric fleet. Eh, so, or some partial electric fleet, so.
Yeah, I mean, first of all, we'd have to ascertain definitively that the length of the route is influencing family decision to drive their children to school, which is an assumption that was made, you know, in this conversation, it's not necessarily that that's a known variable, so I mean, it was a very
Lots of questions.
Thirty thousand foot conversation, not at the detail level. Um, and I think what we see more often at the elementary level is family driving, and at the high school, it's student driving. At the middle school is not much. Um, so that's essentially like, as a broad overview or generalization, uh, that's the trends we see. But the routes, as you know, um, cover, you know, all three, you know, grade span levels.
Ms. Spitzer, then Ms. Solmick?
I, my, he answered my comments.
Okay, Solmick.
Just wanna say that the Chutesbury students who drive, most of them do it because it cuts down at least by thirty-five minutes their trip down the hill.
Right.
Okay, uh, so we gave you a lot of food, Vipada, do you have any questions for us after all that?
I'll just take that. I'll come back with.
It's only next week, right, so we'll look forward to it.
I got a cough drop, sorry, thank you.
Thank you. And that's it for you this evening, no, no, you, you weren't too? No, no, I mean, do what you guys wanna have. Hey. Chair McDonald's.
We have, um, multiple policies, and I'm, I'm gonna go, and suggest we go in the order that's listed, um, on the agenda as opposed to how they're ordered in the packet, if that's okay.
Sure.
Um, cause I think the, the first two are a little bit more cut and dry, but also a little bit time sensitive. Um, so the first one is B I D.
School committee member compensation and expenses?
Correct. Um, so B, the two, B I D and B D B, um, we're looking at updating because of the change in the Amherst town, um, charter. Um, and as part of that, um, so specifically with B I D, um, Amherst school committee members will be compensated. And, and so we, this, uh, proposal, this draft, um, update where you see the additions and changes in, in the top, um, were done jointly with, um, Mr. Bachman from, eh, from the, our town manager to incorporate language from the charter to address that compensation. Um, we did get the, we had, the policy committee when we met, we had the question about, is that the actual stipend? We all thought it was a little bit lower, but, um, that was confirmed, um, it is that. And we also had confirmation that it actually is, it was supposed to be happening January of twenty nineteen. And so that's sort of the, the, a little bit of the time sensitivity there. Um, and then the one question that we, um, also wanted to put, put back, and I think we got that answered in, in email from Mr. Mangano today about how, how it will be paid out in, in installments and how that would be handled, and it sounded like from, from, um, Mr. Mangano's email that it would be payroll and monthly, is that?
Um, bi-monthly.
Bi-monthly, sorry. And so that addition would, um, in this particular policy, would, we probably want to state that in here. Bi-monthly, sorry. And so that addition would um in this particular policy, we'd probably want to state that in here. Does anybody from policy want to say anything? Did I miss anything?
Quite, are we being asked to approve this change or is this? Are we being asked to approve this change?
Can I can I answer that in two ways? One, this is the first read, so there's another opportunity before the vote, A. And then B, the town charter in the town of Amherst has in fact changed and that's not subject to the decision making of this body. But the question is, will our policies reflect that change, right?
Correct. So this is all of the policies that we're talking about tonight are first reads, so there's no vote. It's um questions and discussion um for for the policy subcommittee to take back at our next meeting to um incorporate any revisions that the full committee would like.
In the light of discussion, why was compensation considered justified?
So the Amherst Town Charter um put it into the town charter that a certain elected officials in the town, not just school committee members, would receive stipends. And so that town charter has been approved by the state, so um this is an effort to align the school committee policy with the town of Amherst Charter, which is again, their charter gets approved by the state, our policy is a not, so not to get all technical with it, I think it's um no one on this board was part of those, I think, you know, it was it was approved by the community, not by the school committee, to be really clear, because I think I just want to be clear on the conflict of interest front that 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 wasn't a request that was made at any meeting I was ever at by the school committee. Um but since the town charter, the people who put together town charter included it, uh we need to have the policy then align with the charter for the town.
So I guess I have a question which I'm confused about um as to why, if if it's the Amherst School Committee that is being compensated, why this is up for a vote at the regional level? I mean, I know that there's a lot of gray areas in between policies for both bodies and that this body is the one that oversees the policy subcommittee and therefore this is a policy subcommittee's task and, you know, but at the same time, it also feels like a very strange place for approving of this, especially because we have a body that is comprised of members from other towns who are clearly not being compensated. So I'm just confused. I mean, I don't know if if you had that conversation with town manager and yeah.
Not with the town manager, but with our within our subcommittee. Um and partly, so this doesn't, this this isn't meant to answer that it needs to be in here. It's more sort of why we considered as a group that it we want it should be in here because the regional policy actually states that we should not, that no school committee member can receive compensation. So that the regional, irregardless of what we decide to do, whether we create a policy specifically for Amherst, we still need to address the regional policy about compensation because right now it says we can't be compensated, so we couldn't necessarily have two policies in conflict.
Can I just follow up with this? So so um I'm wondering then i- if we could consider, maybe this is over complicating things, but I'm I'm wondering if we could consider having, you know, change to the language that basically says only Amherst School Committee members would be compensated per the their town charter, but that have the policy approved at the Amherst School Committee level.
So just following up on this, um I wonder if, and maybe this is what you said, but I want to make sure I capture it, that the regional policy might just eliminate the language on compensation altogether from this particular policy. And then the, you know, and not make no statement, just be agnostic.
That's not what I said. I said a different version of that, but I think it would basically have the same effect. So what I said was that the policy would change to state clearly that uh the exception to the policy would be Amherst School Committee members.
Okay.
Because they, per the town charter, would receive compensation. Uh but then the actual policy would be handled through the Amherst School Committee.
My apologies.
But it's the same effect. I mean, I think it's just, yeah.
Well, I think the, I mean, it I think this is kind of a funny thing. I think what that other committee chooses to do is a matter of debate for that other committee. Um so I'm I just actually would prefer to set that aside entirely, given we have a quorum of that committee sitting here. Inter, no, but I'm serious. No, but I'm saying in terms of what we do with this policy, though.
Yeah, and I and I'm sorry, that's that's the only reason why I was raising.
No, no, I know, I know, I know. That's no, but that's why I'm literally just saying, I I don't want to focus on what the other committee does, but the question of then, so what's part of the feedback then that you'd make is that rather than enumerating what Amherst policy is, either, I guess, I guess actually we have two potential proposals on the table, although I recognize Dr. Morris doesn't technically make proposals. But one of them would be to eliminate any mention of compensation and then an alternative would be to make note of the fact that due to the town, Amherst, town of Amherst Charter, Amherst School Committee members receive compensation and then whatever, something like that.
Setting aside what the Amherst School Committee would choose to do.
Right.
Um what I'm hearing, and I think that this would address both of those, is that we eliminate this first proposed paragraph that this next ad that says the Pelham Regional School Committee will serve without financial compensation and then add Amherst School Committee members will serve with compensation as identified in the town charter. And and frankly, we probably wouldn't need to have any detail about what the payment is because it's covered in stated law already.
And it's also a nice a nice element of that, which I think is obviously, I think, where the one of where your comment was coming from was um for want of a better way of phrasing it, it's not not any business of the regions, how the other district chooses to organize itself. I mean, it is only to the extent that it intersects, but which is why we need to make this change. But but otherwise, uh you know, if the town charter for Amherst changes two years from now and they amend it, do we really want to have to go back and reamend the the regional policies for that reason? I don't, I doubt we would want to.
If it's none of our business, why are we commenting on it?
We have to, well, I mean, we have to we have to amend our policy. I think the argument is we need to, the the because of the blanket, it's an interesting thing. I think we'd probably have to I think we would have, I think we might have to clarify what's in here anyway, because I think the concern that the town of Amherst had was that depending on how you read the sentence that regional school committee members will serve without compensation, there might be a sentiment that that binds school committee members who happen to sit in other districts where they receive compensation. And so that it's a matter of sort of a belt and suspenders way of clarifying policy to say, just to make it clear that any member of the regional committee is not going to receive compensation due to the fact that they're on the regional committee. Um but it's acknowledging that there may be variations within the towns. In fact, you could even write that, uh if you wanted to, then if the town of Pelham or Shute'sbury or Leverton decided to pay their school committee members, um the committee, the policy would again, I'm saying seriously, the policy would not allow you to do that and it wouldn't have to be changed at the level.
I I I'm just trying to say, I I understand the the manner of conversation during that. And it will, if that that other committee may find this an interesting topic in the future. But but and for the task at hand, could this be as simple as simply striking that first sentence, the Pelham Regional School Committee members will serve without financial compensation? And just leave everything the the way it is, else the way it is? Like, like, why? Why must we even have a policy that specifies compensation or not? You know, it's like if these towns want to do whatever they want to do, they can do what they want to do, right? So seems to be the simplest way for me to handle it.
Yeah, I would request that this go back to the policy subcommittee for revision based upon this conversation.
Uh have there any, since we're, since our goal was to give feedback to the policy subcommittee, is there any further feedback? Sullivan, did you have your hands raised?
No.
Mr. Ross.
Yeah, and I would also request of the policy subcommittee that it strike the sentence that um where was, I'm sorry, um forgive me, um the one about Leverton and Sh- Shute'sbury not getting compensation. That's that's the prerogative of the 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 Shute'sbury and Leverton School Committees, not of this committee. So I think that sentence should be struck from the policy. It's just as much a decision of those two boards as it is of the Amherst Board. And so you're saying you're denying us the opportunity to be compensated even though it won't happen in my lifetime.
Okay, uh thank you. Yes.
Just ask for clarification. So are we, is the, I'm a little confused by that because I don't see, that's not.
I think it's the Pelham and Regional School.
Yeah, so is the is the sort of head nodding consensus of the committee to just eliminate all mention of compensation altogether? Because I'm I I was hearing two different directions.
Yeah.
I I just have, I guess it's a it's a question maybe that will help clarify for the committee. The original policy, which I don't remember what it actually stated, uh I would imagine was trying to make it clear that the regional committee, including all members from all towns, do not receive financial compensation, right? It's just sort of advising the public and the committee of that. And so because of Amherst Town Charter change, it triggered the need to revise the language to say, but wait a minute, actually, now we have one member town that has changed. And so that's where it came from. So it sounds like there's still perhaps a need for a policy stating that there's there there just not um that maybe there's no expectation of of a financial compensation uh at for the region, but that maybe member towns may decide differently and, you know, and that's up to the member towns to decide. I don't know. Because the the regional body depends on contributions of members from these different member towns. So it really is none of this body's business who's getting paid. This body is not going to pay anybody. It's the member towns that will pay the the perhaps, you know, potentially.
Well, actually, that's true, except for the, except. See, this is the funny thing. The policy does actually have meaning because my guess is if that not, this is, by the way, a terrible idea. I want to make it very clear, I'm not suggesting this. But if you if you totally eliminate this, then theoretically, um we could be proposing in our own, I mean, I don't know how that would work, but there could be some effort to propose, like, well, if the local elementary committees are getting paid, then when I will pay the regional committee do. And so there there appears to be a useful affirmative statement that the regional committee, the member, the regional, the members of the regional committee do not draw any compensation for their service on the regional committee, which I think is the strict statement.
Yeah, I don't think you need to make it any more complicated than it already is. All I'm asking is that that one sentence be struck from the policy. If you guys have an opportunity to get paid, congratulations. You know, it's not, it's not ours to deny that to you. I don't want to have to vote against this, which I would, as long as that sentence is in there.
Which which sentence, I'm sorry.
The one sentence about Pelham and Regional School Committee Committee Members will serve without financial compensation. If Leverton decides to pay me for being on this board, I don't think it's the it's the um uh it's the power of the authority of this board to deny that.
I think that that's what we're actually getting at, though. It's not about complicating it. It's actually about making it clearer so that it's, you know, saying that this regional body, this regional body is not the one that's paying the members of this committee. Because if you do, then it goes back to what Mr. Nakajima said, which is that then that there is actually a need for a language that states that there is no financial compensation for this body. So this body exists as a as a composite of all of the member towns. That's all it is. We're trying to clarify the purpose of this policy and clarify it.
It theoretically could create ambiguity.
Uh the the uh second to last paragraph that talks about reimbursements, we're telling the town of Pelham that they have to reimburse, they may reimburse me for my expenses. How, why are we directing uh the town of Pelham what to do or not to do?
Uh well, I mean, I I think two things. I mean, this is what this is.
This is current policy.
This, yeah. Uh well, what's interesting, I honestly, I think I'll take the superintendent from Pelham's answer to that question.
So there is a, for the regional schools, there is a school committee line in our budget every year. And so when people go to like the MASSS com, MASSS, MASC conference, things like that, as part of their duties in the region, they're compensated from the district budget. It doesn't go to the town of Pelham or the town of Amherst, the town of Shute'sbury, town of Leverton. It's part of our current regional budget. So if you look at the budget book, there's a line for school committees and it covers expenses that school committee members might incur for going to some of the things like this. So it is, it's not going to the town, it is a current part of the budget. It's not much, frankly, but it is, you know.
So who is this enabling body that tells Pelham they have to reimburse me if I attend a conference?
They don't.
Can I try one more? Sure. So so the regional school budget is voted every year by the four towns. In that budget, there's a line item that includes for school committee expenses, you know, covers for legal expenses and then there's other expenses so that if school committee members are participating in things like new member orientation sessions, conferences, other professional meetings, that from the regional school budget, school committee members would get reimbursed for expenses that are attached. But it's not like the town of Pelham gets a bill. It's part of the bill they pay as a general assessment for the funding the regional schools because a line item within the regional schools budget.
So I have a I have a follow up question then. Does that mean that, I'm forgive me for asking, but it's actually a useful question. Does any member of the Pelham uh Elementary School Committee who might choose to go to a conference, let's say the MASC conference, do they get compensated of the regional school bu- budget, line item for school committees?
So.
If the chair of the Pelham School Committee
Thank you.
goes to MASC's conference, who reimburses those expenses?
It would have to be reimbursed from the Pelham Public Schools.
Okay. Is there a policy in Pelham that says they would do that?
Um I'm trying to think of this policy.
The reason I'm trying to be pushy on this is since the actual headline for this document says Amherst Public Schools, Pelham Elementary School, and Amherst Pelham Regional School District Policy Manual, it actually begs the original question, I think Ms. McDonough raised, which are are we, are we in fact setting policy for all three committees? And when we pass these things, are are there are there in fact separate policies?
Right, so I'm looking at Ms. McDonald a little bit to see if when the original was voted, because I see that was stripped from the bottom of this.
Um it's it's actually up higher.
Oh, I apologize.
So December seventh, twenty eleven. So this is um this is Big Hornet's Nest.
This is one of the most interesting, this is one of the most interesting conversations we've had in weeks.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald, for your service. Yes, I I will happily share a spreadsheet that I put together on one like bored Saturday morning, but um we have um a lot of policy that is, has been voted by the region and not voted by individual member districts and I was told, um so Debbie Westmoreland has served on the policy subcommittee for years. Um that that is sort of, has been protocol, that if it's approved by the region, it apply, its policy then applies to the Amherst District and the Pelham District as well. Um unless the the individual school dis um committees, elementary committees um have a vote. So you will notice that there is complete inconsistency in our policy manual about whether it has been, a policy has been voted at all three districts or just the region. And in some cases, there's no record of just to be perfectly blunt, at least in the policy manual itself of when it was approved. So.
So that does mean, no, but that does mean, um it is, it is sticky wicket. Uh it does actually mean, though, that this this conversation like really does need to be well defined. Because it means in all like, I'm I'm just saying this out loud, it means in all likelihood, the answer to Mr. Menino's question is yes, unintentionally, this policy probably does essentially guide the actions of the Pelham El- Pelham Elementary Committee. And if that committee should choose to take it up in their meetings, they can choose, no, no, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, because that's a different meeting. In the same way, in the same way that someone who also, you know, artist formerly known as Prince, somebody who might otherwise known him as the Amherst uh Elementary School Committee Chair, uh was identifying the likely need to do that too, in which case we might actually, out of this potential mess, I want to call it, we might actually need to start differentiating for some of, not everything necessarily, but on some things, we may need to differentiate separate policies that are clearly articulated for different districts.
Yeah, so I just want to answer the question definitively that if the chair of the Pelham School Committee wanted to go to a conference, our business office is very good at making sure that we're appropriating the funds from the appropriate budget, so it would not be paid for from the region.
Just to be clear, I trust that that's entirely.
Oh, yeah, I just need to say that out loud.
I know you do, you do need to say that out loud, but I was like, there was no intimation that that was the case. It was literally, this is a weird conversation. It's literally like, remember like Rich Al Gore once a million years ago said there was no controlling legal authority over what he was doing? Uh I don't know, something he was doing and and as vice president. This is one of those weird questions of like, what's the controlling legal authority for what's going on on our committee? Um, cool, what else you got? Cool, what else you got?
Well, since Amherst is so easy. Okay, um. The next one would be, um, B D B. Um, which the, the proposal that the policy subcommittee, um, has put in here is, um, in the middle of the, of the page, or the sort of lower third of the page, um, additions eight points eight and nine that do specify Amherst School Committee only, um, about, um, duties of the, um, duties of the chair and the school committee. Um, and so it's specifically as, uh, language that comes from the Amherst Town Charter. And so it begs the question of should this, because of our prior conversation. But because this policy as it is right now, I'm just gonna look to see if it has a voting record. No.
Yeah. It actually does.
It does have, yeah. So this one, um, is unique in that it has been voted by all three committees, um.
Twice in fact.
Correct.
Can I, can I, um, I don't know if people have substantive things they wanna discuss on this. But one thing I would love for the chair of this subcommittee, your subcommittee to do, is the talk, talk to the Amherst Elementary Chair, as well as the superintendent for that district, and find out whether, I don't care, I mean, I, not that I, my word is any more important than anyone else's. I'm saying from my perspective, I could care less if this is in a final policy voted for by the region. But I think the sequencing of events would be, you'd want, I think, the Amherst Committee to decide whether it wants to vote this first. And then if they voted, then they could come here, and then the debate at the region would be, this is essentially, you know, a ministerial act to approve something that's already been approved by another body, rather than being debated here. Those are debating some of the town's issues.
Excellent point, Mr. Nakajima. In fact, I think it, um, applies the lesson that we just learned three or four minutes ago, which is if the default protocol is Miss Westmoreland educated us on, is that the, the region approves a policy, and then if nothing else happens, the Pelham School Committee, the Amherst School Committee are then following it and bound to it. The, uh, I, I, a new, a more enlightened protocol would be, as soon as we start looking at any policy, doing a first reading, or a, a first time it goes to the subcommittee, the protocol should be to just send a friendly notification to those committees saying, hey, we're looking at these policies. Should you want to take them up and do something custom on your own, this would be the time to do it. So, so I like that idea. I did wanna make a comment on this, in the content of this one we're looking at. Not on the changes, but in the spirit of while we're in the area, which is what always happens when we're in policies. So the section on secretary, so as, as a former secretary of a different committee, the, there's a couple of things that need to be called out here. Um, so the secretary on some committees is the vice vice chair. Right, and so performs the duties of the vice chair if the vice chair is not available and the chair is not available. So if there was a, for example, a five-person, uh, committee, and the chair and the vice chair were not available, the secretary would be running that. So I think, I think a suggestion there would be to duplicate the paragraph from the duties of the vice chair section, uh, where you say the secretary of the school committee must be a member, and will be presiding when the vice chair is unable to do so, et cetera. In addition, the secretary or a designee, for example, the person sitting behind me, would then pro- uh, perform those, those duties. O- o- otherwise it reads as the person who's the officer of that committee designated as the, as the secretary has to be the notes taker, which obviously is not for, for, um, a number of our committees. And it's important to call this out because secretary is by definition, uh, member of Union Twenty-Six on some of the committees. This was a really fun one.
So just a, uh, I guess a point of clarification, um, about the duties of the secretary. So I'm not familiar with the policy that you're referencing, that the secretary is the vice vice chair. Um, I'm just wondering if, if that can be clarified for the committee. Cause if this, if this, like, literally this definition is not that. So where, where does that secretary become the vice vice chair?
Yeah.
That's a good question. So that, I mean, that's what I was, was always told when I came on board the, uh, the school committee, X number of years ago. So, I mean, we should clarify that, cause otherwise there are committees, um, who might wanna be notified to look at this policy. Who, who have to decide, uh, where the duties of the chair fall when both the chair and the vice chair are not available, right? I mean.
Yeah.
So, um, I think what I'd love to do is stop this, I appreciate you bringing up some points. I'm not trying to, I'm not, I'm, this is not anyways a characterization of the comment. But, um, I'd like to punt this back to the policy subcommittee, and you can, you can take this question up.
One question, which has nothing to do with the section you're talking about, but if you read the first paragraph under school committees, officers, and duties. In the case of the, because of the Town Charter and the change in the date of elections for Amherst, should we look at this? Because it says you'll be, the regional school committee chair, vice chair, and secretary will be selected at the next regular school committee meeting following the latest annual town election of the member towns of the region. So I think that section is gonna need some work too.
Excellent.
Sorry.
So by the way, you're batting, you're two for two.
That's why we do two.
And I, and I believe as we introduce this thing, you save the easiest one for last? I think.
Actually, the, the next one, if we go to J I C F D.
Okay, alright.
Maybe we can knock one off.
Well, the nice thing is, this is just the first read, so we're actually knocking all of them off.
Right. So this, this is our, uh, students' anti-bullying policy. Um, and I apologize, the, I thought that we were going to get a better copy that showed the markup. So let me see if I, I have the. The new section.
My first question was gonna be, what's do.
Uh, J I C, no, the, go to the next page, or pages. It starts. So under retaliation, that second paragraph that begins with consistent with M G L and ends with characteristics is added. And that is on advice, so on advice of council. Um, because of changes in mass general law, um, this language needs to be added to our policy. So, um, this was language that was provided to us by council as being required to be inserted into this anti-bullying policy.
And the, the rest of the policy is otherwise unchanged?
Correct. Correct. That's the only change.
Okay, is there any feedback on this? Yes, Mr. Rush?
On page two. The paragraph that begins upon receipt of a complaint. Um, is, is there any, had there been any discussion of making that more specific? Um, it seems like you could drive a truck through that paragraph in terms of time.
We, the policy subcommittee did not discuss that.
Tomorrow's?
Would you?
I don't know if it's possible to, I don't think it's possible to designate a time. But that just seems like it, it could go on forever before the second, the report, or an investigation, right, excuse me.
Tomorrow's?
Yeah, so, you know, in terms of our guidelines, we did have training from this, from, um, Attorney Tate, beginning of this month. So our, our local, not the policy, but the guidelines, and, and our, our local plan has more definitive timelines, and we can share that with the committee.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. McDonald.
A final clarification. Is there one policy manual for the Amherst Public Schools? The Pelham Elementary Schools, and the Amherst Pelham Regional District? Cause that's a big, bold heading at the, at the beginning of this. There's one policy manual, manual for all three districts?
Yes, there are a few individual policies that do not apply to all three districts. Like, for instance, there's one that's specific to the elementary schools about, um, compulsory enrollment age and things like that. But in general, the vast majority of policies, and Ms. McDonald, correct me if I'm wrong, apply to all three districts. It's really the exception is that, the rule is that all three do, and there's a few exceptions, but they're few and far between.
Okay, uh, good, let's move on.
And just as a fun fact, there's close to two hundred policies in the manual, so.
I just wanna say, I appreciate the work of the policy subcommittee. I mean, it's, it's, I, I appreciate the sentiment. This is one of those moments where you have to stop and say, other people have been wrestling with these topics even more, and thank you.
That's why I thanked her for her service earlier.
Exactly right, exactly right.
Both of our policy subcommittee members.
Exactly.
Um, so this last one, um, again, just reminder, it's a, it's a first read. And, um, we ha- we had a lot of conversation about it at our committee. But this, this particular draft, and I'm going to bring it to our friends from, from Pelham, which probably looks very familiar to you. This is actually a draft that probably is old at this point, may- maybe a month old, from, from Pelham.
Oh, okay.
Addressing harassment and discrimination, um, on school grounds from the hostile work environment, so from others, not just student on student, or, um.
Community.
Within the staff, yes, community. So this is the draft that Pelham, um, discussed, and maybe you'd be willing to give a little introduction on this. We had, uh, at the policy subcommittee, some really rich, robust discussion about it. We had a lot of questions. We decided not to take a stab at making any edits, but just to bring it to the full committee for discussion.
Looking at your faces, if you'd like for me to share.
Well, the only thing I remember from the discussion is that you can block an email come, incoming to a school email address, cause I didn't know you could do that.
So, um, so the conversations come up at the Pelham meeting earlier this month. And it was a draft, I think, a lot of the discussion at the Pelham School Committee, so the draft was written by, primarily by two members of the Pelham School Committee. They shared a draft with Attorney Terry. He made some track changes, edits that were accepted. Um, and then there was more conversation that is ongoing between this Pelham School Committee Chair and Attorney Terry. I think one of the key variables that, um, is a part of the discussion in Pelham is the challenge of having a policy that applies to everyone, students and adults, because there are different rights and different, um. Yeah, there's some challenges to crafting a policy that applies. It creates some awkward language and wording, uh, in the policy, and I think there was some discussion at the Pelham School Committee about whether the committee wanted to have a policy that applied to both students and staff members. Uh, or, uh, students and adults, cause it wasn't just staff members, it was members of the community in the school. Or they wanted to distinguish between those two into separate policies, or look to see if the students were covered in existing policies. So that, that was the, kind of, when I was thinking back on the Pelham meeting, those were the main topics of the conversation. I think there was, what I heard was there was strong support for having such a policy to ensure, uh, particularly in Pelham, the conversation was focused on staff safety and wellbeing, um, and workplace safety. There was, so, so the Pelham School Committee, I think, uh, by assent, asked the school committee chair to have another go around with the attorney, and she's expecting feedback, I believe, this week from Attorney Terry, uh, on the policy. And it'll come up at the next Pelham meeting, which is in the first week of November. Trying to see, what am I missing from the month?
I guess I, it, this was to enable the principal to be able to refer to a policy for a situation that occurred for which we didn't really have a stated policy. I think, is that, yeah.
That was the discussion last spring.
So Dr. Morris, um, you're in sort of a unique position on which I think you can see how policies play out for different, um, target populations, essentially, probably better than anyone else here. Or even obviously better than anyone else here. So I guess the one question I have for you is, uh, do, is, is your sense that we have existing policies that could serve to protect, um, students? Or that we need a new policy to protect students, um, or not? I mean, I think we already had clarity that we don't actually have a policy that addresses the circumstances of adults.
So I, I think what feels a little unique on the student's side in this particular policy is some of the language about, um, conduct is objectively severe or pervasive enough that a reasonable person would agree that it is harassment. I don't see that language in student policies. Um, I think there are more policies, to your point, I agree that there are more policies and protections for students, um, in the existing policy book. But I think it, I'm just being cautious not to make a recommendation, so, uh, I'm a little, I'm trying to think of my language. But I think one could, could reasonably go forward with a policy that tries to address both, or addresses some of the concerns around adults, and then use that as a vehicle to look back at the student policy and see if any amendments would be needed.
So I recognize you're suggesting that you don't wanna make a recommendation. But I'm just, so based on the way you're phrasing that, it sounds like if we chose not to create one unified policy that addressed both adults and students, that there may be a need for a look back to see whether we need to insert some of the relevant language in other policies that are directed towards the student population.
Yeah, and I don't think that would be, um, I know probably the wrong moment to say this, but I don't think this would be a huge task for, for the policy subcommittee or for the committees, because I think so many of the, the student policies are already there, and it would be, you know, some fine tuning, but not taking all of those apart and putting them back together again.
And that actually gets at, one of the questions that we, we struggled with, um, or discussed at the subcommittee meeting, which was, um, how does this interact and correlate with the multiple other anti-harassment policies that we do have on the books, um, for the region? And, um, so, but th- those are mostly, I believe, the student harassment. So that, I think, answers one of our big questions.
Yeah, I think the other thing that we didn't share, if it's okay to, to offer, is from the Pelham School Committee perspective, and this all happened in public meeting, you know, there's no secrets here, um, was the thought that this might replace some of, we have a couple, uh, which we looked at here at the region, a couple policies specific to adults in that this one, this would be more comprehensive and could, and replace some of the existing policies as it relates to adults.
Uh, I guess I'm just gonna go around the table and see if people have any further questions or comments to provide as feedback.
I'm waiting for feedback from the chair of the committee.
Okay. Spencer?
Uh, I guess I would say the same thing if we're gonna get feedback, more feedback. And maybe that would be the time to take feedback back to Pelham from here as well.
Okay, Ms. Rush? You don't have to, okay, uh, Ms. McDonald.
He's looking at you.
No, you don't have to say anything, that's why I was moving on.
Why are you looking at me?
You're obviously receiving all this feedback. Sullivan?
No, I'm good.
Okay, Ms. McDonald?
So first, does this, it seems like it cuts off on the second page.
I just noticed that, yeah. It does go on to the third page. I mean, it's not in the packet, but the policy.
Thinkably.
Third page would be good. Um, my, my, my general question though is, as we get lost in the weeds of policy, you know, this, this came up because of a harassment issue that was, was brought to our attention and that is apparently ongoing. And I just, I just wonder, I don't know if this is a question for the superintendent, um, is, is, are, are, are things? So thinking about the topic of creating a safe work environment for staff, right? Is, is there policy that doesn't exist that is causing you a problem for to, that's preventing you from creating a safe and productive workplace for staff at the moment, that, that you're waiting on? Or, or, or was this just a, or was, was the current situation that you're dealing with, uh, just impetus for us to look at this more broadly? Um, I, I, I say that because there's many good and detailed aspects of this that we could spend a lot of time on. And I don't wanna miss, like, the one that is going to be the most useful or empowering or, or needed, uh, in the current situation.
So my response would be that this, uh, so I would perhaps slightly disagree that there's one incident or one situation that's, uh, creating this need. When I, this came up in Pelham, one of the things we heard from the Pelham staff was that this was one, there was one incident last spring, but that it was a larger picture of making sure that staff felt, staff wellbeing, was, there was a policy that supported that, and that it was explicit. And I think when I met, and I did meet with the, um, president of the A P E A, not specific on this policy, but the topic, cause the Pelham piece did come up, um, in a public venue, and I wanna make sure that our teachers association was included. Uh, they were able to cite, um, other concerns that were longstanding, not individual people, but just that this was part of a larger picture that staff members felt like there needed to be a stronger policy in place to support. So, um, for me, that's the framing that I'd have for it. The discussion is that it, it's, it can't be, kind of, and I'm not suggesting you're saying this, but I wanna be really clear about it. It can't be acute to a specific thing, so we referenced that there was an incident in Pelham, but what it, what it. but what it illustrated was that there wasn't a policy to support this in a number of situations that occur for staff members.
The incident precipitated a larger discussion.
Exactly, yeah. So I just think it's important to note that. In terms of the other piece, I do think that principals, when issues arise, often will talk to me or Ms. Cunningham or others. And we do look at policy to guide our decision makings. And right now, they're, in the lack of a clear policy, it leaves a gray area, and that is unsettling for us. And it's not specific to one situation, it's more, we would rather have clarity on what the policy of the district is, so that we can take actions to support staff, instead of being uncertain or unclear on what actions would be supported based on the policy. So in the absence of a policy, it leaves us making decisions that we don't have as much certainty in as we'd like. Sorry, that was long-winded.
Ms. Spencer?
Sorry, I forgot you were going around the table.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay, so let me gather my thoughts. But I guess I want to ask Ms. McDonald if we should bring up one other question that we had to get some feedback on?
Yeah.
Because, so I've, one thing was kind of where this policy applies is kind of broad if you look under the application of the policy. So if anybody else has concerns about, you know, that was the other area of conversation we had, particularly in number three, like at any bus stop, given that bus stops are often people's lawns or intersections of busy streets. So I think, though, that's kind of the other thing that we're struggling with on the Policy Subcommittee, is just making sure that we're not overstepping. I mean, I think if we were to overstep with this policy, we would find that, you know, it wouldn't be, I'm not sure what the right term is, but it wouldn't, you know, the larger freedom of speech issues, you know, would prevail. But it's just something that I think we'd want to try to make sure our policy is as close as possible to what we are in fact able to control.
That's really interesting.
Yeah, I'll elaborate on that conversation. Because there, if you look at that introductory paragraph, the big one at the top, the last sentence of that specifically talks about where it is applicable, or for whom and where. So general public on school property, including any property leased by the district, at any school-related event, or that in any way affects the school environment. And so we did have question about whether this whole section about locations was even necessary, because there is that bit up there. And then also because it seemed that some of these, this detailed list of locations might not really be sort of considered school property by the definition in that above paragraph. So we sort of wrangled with that and punted and decided to bring it here.
That's really interesting. Ms. Downs?
Yeah, I think, I think this policy uses a lot of the language that we saw in the other example policies that we, you know, we looked at a meeting or two ago. And I think does a lot, in my mind anyway, to address the concerns that I've heard raised by staff and by, you know, committee and community members. I actually think, in some ways, that language about the, kind of, you know it when you see it, which is addressed through the hostile environment, is one in which the victim's subjectively views a conduct as harassment, and that any reasonable person would agree is harassment, is enough to cover sort of the general sentiment of what this policy is trying to address, which basically is, if it feels like harassment and other people looking at it would say, wow, that sounds like harassment, that I don't think we need to spell out every single incident. Because as we stated before in our previous meeting, the intent of this is not to squash free speech. We're not trying to account for different places where you cannot say something, right? The idea is to prevent the kind of abusive behavior, repetitive behavior, or extreme behavior that would constitute harassment regardless of where you are. But if it's directed at school personnel who typically don't have protections in place, then we want it to stop. We want to find a way to remedy that and stop them so that we, you know, we're not putting them in a dangerous or compromising environment. So I think, you know, I would be in favor of eliminating the detailed information. Plus, I think things are changing so quickly, quite frankly, there's so many different ways. There's a, you know, this new social media platform called TikTok now that I just found out about that I've been watching some videos on, which is awesome. And it's a great supportive environment right now. You know, but there's so many things that happen quickly, right? And there's changes that happen, you never know how these tools or medium will change. So in any case, I think that this gets at a lot. I'm curious what that third page is.
So we're actually all the most important things were located.
And so I'm wondering, you know, if maybe on our, I guess, you know, when we sit down to actually look at the draft.
It's not on the website.
It's not on the website. So when we look at...
No, I think it's only a sentence or two. As I recall from Pelham.
That's interesting. So it actually goes, "Acts of retaliation are a violation of this policy in cases involving possible criminal conduct. Administrators shall determine whether law enforcement采取 measures should be notified."
What a, what a...
Eminently sensible.
Where do you read that?
From Mr. Sullivan's paperwork. It is something Mr. Sullivan brought, a bit of paperwork.
And where did you get the paperwork?
Policy Subcommittee.
You get to know who to ask.
I was going to say. I fully endorse page number three. I think that's an eminently sensible recommendation. Yeah, so I mean... Oh, you have it?
Yeah, no, so what I'm wondering is if, you know, in the draft that we're going to review, I guess, like the, you know, because this is coming from Pelham, right? So I guess my question is, was the intent to actually use the Pelham's policy for this committee? Or is it another example or sample for us to draw from to draft our own policy?
That, yeah. I'm getting nods from my Subcommittee colleagues.
Just somebody say a full sentence.
It was the latter, that it was a starting point. The intent, there was no sort of motive to adopt the identical policy, but to use it as our starting point.
Ms. Spencer?
But I would like to add that I thought there would be some utility in keeping them as close to each other as possible for the ease of the administrative staff that we share.
Sure.
It would probably be easier if they had a policy that was consistent across the environments that they were working in. But if there was a strong reason, I think, for us to say we want the region to be this and we don't care what the Pelham says this, then I think, obviously, we should be free to do that.
So I'm going to exert the fact that I haven't said anything yet. And also, I said we were going around the table, so we're going around the table. Just a couple things. And one, I think obviously the region should have its own policy, but the idea we adopt a model off of Pelham makes complete sense in what they end up doing. I would be interested in knowing, based on what Pelham chooses to do, whether or not it's sensible to separate out students from the adult population and what effect that has on the rest of the policy. Does it change, does it make it tighter or not? Are there things that could be, that are improved in a basis? I guess we can learn that as Pelham goes through its process. I actually, I agree with the previous comments that are made, that Section B, application of policy, should just be deleted. And I think the first paragraph probably does actually cover it fairly well. What I would love to know, though, from the Superintendent, because I'm hoping, this is on some level being parallel processed, is I'm assuming, and I guess, forgive me in here, is there similar language in here about the district creating follow-on management practices or guidelines or anything like that? Because the one we just looked at a moment ago on bullying, there was a whole thing in there that said, the district will create sort of implementation framework or plan around this. And I don't know if we have that language here, but we obviously need it. And the reason, I mean, so one, I would suggest having that language. But beyond that, one of the things I really want to know from the Superintendent, because we're trying to do something that we haven't done before, and we're looking at other states and adopting models of what they've done, what I really, what I don't want to do is create a policy that then, when you're trying to actually implement it with your colleagues and develop sort of implementation plans, you then say to yourself, oh, gosh, I wish the policy had been framed differently because we actually want to do X, or we want to do Y, and we need it in there or not. And so it's not, it's not so much that I'm suggesting, I mean, I know there's a delicacy to this, because I'm not suggesting you're supposed to sort of reverse engineer a policy from what you'd like to implement. That sounds wrong. But at the same, but at the same time, there has to be some inner, I mean, let me... I'm sorry, this was a question. Are you parallel processing some sort of interactivity with the committees to think about the practicality of, as this is being framed, what you would do with it?
Yeah. So yes. Clear answer, right? So on the first question, if you look at Section C on the second page, the fourth paragraph down, I'll just read it aloud, because people may not have this online. The School Committee directs the Superintendent to develop guidelines for the implementation of this policy and to publish these district guidelines in the appropriate handbooks. Principal may establish specific protocols related to these district guidelines. So that is, was intentionally done by the Pelham, as the Pelham folks, that they were putting it together for exactly the reasons you cited. For me, I do feel that this, kind of, the policy, and I agree with a lot of their visions or suggestions that I heard, and he does offer principals who are going to be the front lines more often than me, but they'll be getting advice from Ms. Cunningham, myself, or the people in those roles, with more clarity than currently exists. And I think it is actionable in a way that's not too narrow and defines, like, you know, A plus A, therefore, you know, an outcome, but gives clarity and support. I think one thing that I know the Pelham folks are interested in doing is get soliciting staff feedback as well. Not administrative staff, but more general staff feedback. So we're trying to figure out a way to do that, because they may not be aware of some of the legal parameters, but I think we have a good, some thoughts, and we're going to talk about the next meeting. And certainly involving the Association as well, because we want to get feedback, if the idea is the well-being of staff, to have direct feedback from staff in the appropriate way and vehicle would be informative. And then I would be doing the same with the leadership team that I work with as well, that we'd be getting feedback from principals and district directors, Ms. Cunningham, who has looked at this. But before we, I would feel comfortable taking to a vote to the question. As I look at it, I think it does satisfy my thoughts, but we'd want to get more direct feedback, especially given the intent of the policy to sort of skip that step, I think would be a mistake.
Okay. Any further feedback for the Policy Subcommittee on this item? Yes, Ms. Thomas?
I'm just curious whether or not there was any thought given to including appeal language.
Appeal?
Appeal, someone who's accused of bullying. I didn't see anything in there. But shouldn't they have the right to appeal?
So that's, that is, that is a point referred back to the committee?
Yep.
So for consideration? Okay. Anything else? And there's any, does the committee itself feel it needs any further feedback from us?
Nope, we're good.
Good. Then since we're way past time, we're going to keep moving. Warrant approval process. Discussion and possible vote to discuss whether all committee members should sign warrants, or to assign one committee member to sign warrants and report out regulated school committee meetings, a summary of this work, as per Chapters 57 and 58 of the Massachusetts Municipal Modernization Act. Who wants to introduce this topic?
If you want to, I'm happy to. So this act was passed in 2017 in conversation with Mr. Terry. There are many committees, this one, as the warrant sits right in front of me. We should get them signed before the vote happens, just to, for humor related night. That there is a decision that sort of forced, one is that the current practice of the committee, my understanding of current practice of the committee is that this folder goes around and that everyone looks and signs them. Another option that the committee could consider is, that was new under the act in 2017, is that one member of the committee can be assigned to that task and then report back at the next meeting. And the encouragement from legal counsel was for this committee, not necessarily tonight, could be at the next meeting, to vote one way or the other, so that a clear decision is on record, instead of right now, which is kind of like we continue prior practice. But we, there hasn't been an affirmative vote one way or the other.
So just to be, just to clarify, what we're doing is not legally wrong currently, but it would be ideal for us to clarify for the public and anyone who cares. What are our approaches?
So from what I understand, it's true that the committee should sign, you know, could continue its practice of signing warrants together, but that there should be a vote as part of it, so that it's not just, you know, you know, folks signing independently, folder gets passed around, but rather that there is, on the public record, a vote to support all of those. Because also simultaneously, if there are members of the committee who have a conflict of interest, who cannot be voting on specific items for the budget, they can recuse themselves or abstain from those votes. And similarly, if they object to, you know, a payment of some kind for some reason, they can also, they would be going on the record.
So if we, if we, if we vote to designate someone to sign the warrants, does that then mean that vote covers all future warrants? And then they have to report out the warrants? My recollection is that that individual would have to report out the warrants to the committee. But does that mean that essentially you take a one-time vote to designate? I mean, presumably you do it each session when you have new members of the committee. But that you designate someone to sign the warrants, and then once you've taken that one vote, then that person, the committee doesn't vote every time on the warrants, but that person has an obligation to report out the warrants that were signed? Is that right? Okay.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you for that clarification.
Okay. So I would love to defer action on this until next meeting. People have any questions about this? Yes?
Do we have to decide what reporting out means? I mean, what is reporting out? Do you have to, you know, go through and say, I signed this committee warrants for payroll and for insurance? You know, I mean, if you look through the warrants, there are some pretty standard things. But what does report out mean? That's my question.
Right. We don't have clarity on that? This is another reason why we're going to punt this item to the next meeting, so we can get an answer to that question. Is there, is there, who would help us on that? Who would help?
I believe Attorney Terry would be the logical person to help with that.
All right. Can we get, you get an answer from him?
Yeah. Just one question of what would happen during the summer months? If we adopted a model of where we all vote?
Yeah, let's figure that, can we get an answer on that, too?
So let me see if I can capture the questions. So the one is, because it, you know, in Chapter 58, 58, it says, "A record of such actions." So my understanding is they report out a record of the votes, or the warrants they took. But more clarity on what that record would look like.
Well, but also, I guess, the variability of what you do during the summer, does it mean you then, if a committee...
No, I'm just, I'm trying to take, was that, is that an accurate reflection of the first piece that Ms. Anderson said?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I thought you were...
No, no, I just wanted to make sure.
I thought you were on to the second one.
Yeah, no. Okay.
And then the question is, what do you do during the summer? Currently, we voted to designate a subset to do this. I mean, does that mean, I mean, literally, the question would be, is this a one-time thing, literally? Or if you have a committee that regularly votes the warrants, does that mean during the summer they take a separate vote to designate an individual to do it? Or what?
Got it.
Okay, any other questions on this particular item? Seeing none. We have, we have any gifts, by the way?
No, just pass around. It's intended to be passed around.
I always like to get this one, this one, like, popped in our hands, because we're so close to finishing the meeting. All right, planning. So next couple of meetings are kind of packed.
You have one more?
Oh, well, we can, we can share.
So Mr. Sullivan, did you hear back from students?
Yeah, well, I mean, it could be voted on.
It's not, you know, I...
They're not, they can't do it next week, okay.
I could tell you about it, but we're not on that item right now. We're doing school committee signings.
So we're going to have some middle school students come in to talk about their advocacy efforts. Mr. Sullivan just informed me that they can't come next week, so that, that is off. But we had, in SSO, you know, Dr. Brady texted me as she was leaving that she was planning on going at the next, one of the next two meetings. So it's trying to get a sense of the warrant piece, the fields, the next step on fields, the bus, are three things we need to come back to. The budget Subcommittee report, seems like...
Yeah, fields, I assume we're going to be done in a while, because, I mean, we're not going to, you know what I mean? Like, you're not going to have a plan next week, so.
Okay.
Assuming that'll be...
Maybe in November.
Yeah, yeah.
The budget things, I think we need to check in with Sean, because we didn't meet tonight. I, we're going to meet before the meeting next week. I don't know if all this will be ready.
Sure. So I think budget guidance is something we should do regardless of that piece, key indicators, and talking about what presentations the committee is looking for. We'll certainly have policy to come, oh, actually, the policy...
We also...
No, we're not meeting till November.
So we won't... So we want a policy.
Like, didn't we, didn't we move regional assessment to this coming week, too?
Yep, so regional assessment discussion.
That may be brief, some of these may be fairly brief, though.
So what I have, just because this is, we're crossing out and adding things, so I've got the bus contract. Hopefully, we'll get clarity on the warrants. I think Mr. Terry's pretty responsive. Regional assessment discussion, budget guidance, key indicators. The other two topics we could potentially do are the wellness approach and update and strategic planning work. And, um, and we could figure out, doing both of those might be heavy, but maybe one of the.
Let's, let's, let's talk about this after the, outside of the meeting, figure out what the timing is. I want to make sure next week's meeting is shorter.
Yeah, so I can be, I can do, I can help with that.
We can all help on that, but the point is, we're gonna work, let's just work on that outside of the meeting.
Sure, sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, yes.
Can I just, uh, can we add for the December tenth meeting, um, S E T F goals and budget guidance? Because that's something that that subcommittee is is working on.
Sure.
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
Sure, I'm sorry, the S E T F, the School Equity Task Force, uh, they would like an opportunity to present their, uh, recommended goals to the committee
Okay.
and their budget guidance for the upcoming year.
Okay, great. Good. Are we set? So the, we have gifts, uh, if anyone's interested in knowing. George Takei, who was actually incarcerated within, uh, a, um, camp during World War Two, has done a manga essentially about his life, which is a Japanese doll cartoon, about, uh, his life and in particularly the incarceration of fellow Japanese Americans. And and when I was talking to Marguevar the other day, um, she pointed out that our curriculum used to have a lower grades, a discussion of the internment of Japanese Americans. Doesn't really now, does it in upper grades, and so I, because this is out and it was geared towards, um, younger, younger readers, it seemed like a neat opportunity to get this book available, um, in our school districts. So that's sort of it. I appreciate people being willing to accept it.
I'm sorry, did I hear you right, that it's not covered in the upper, in high school?
It is covered in the upper grades. It's not, it's not covered in the lower grades, and it used to be more in the lower grades. So that's an explanation of that. It doesn't need to be pulled out. Uh, and, um, anyone want to read this? I'm not gonna read it. Anyone want to read it? Come on, somebody.
Um, I move to accept the following gift from Mary Lou Conca, number twenty-five, to support student need lunch balances in the amount of sixty dollars. Um, from anonymous, Your Cause Charitable, number five six zero one eight seven zero one six five, to support arms at principal discretion in the amount of ten dollars. And also from anonymous, Your Cause Charitable, number five six zero one eight five six five six zero, to support arms at principal discretion in the amount of ten dollars. From Eric Nakajima, to support two copies of They Called Us Enemy by George Takei, estimated value of twenty-four dollars. From anonymous, ten copies of On Earth Were Briefly Gorgeous by Ocean Vuong for high school L G B T Q literature class, estimated value of two hundred dollars. For a total cash of eighty dollars. Um, and also to accept the grant from Walmart, number zero three four zero zero one two, to support Summit Academy Mitting Grant in the amount of one thousand five hundred dollars.
There are second.
Second.
Then moved and seconded. All those in favor of accepting the gifts, please signify by raising your hand.
Aye.
It is Carey's unanimously. Uh, is there a further motion?
Move to adjourn?
Send move to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. We are adjourned. Thank you very much. Thanks for participating.